Okay, we're gonna get started. Megan Selinger is out today, so I will be running the meeting. This is the December 19th, 2024 Minnetoka School Board Study Session. It's six o'clock, which is the time for citizen input. Citizen input is the time and opportunity for the public to address the school board on any topic in accordance with the guidelines. I do not believe we have anyone here. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Going once, going twice? Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our discussion of course reinstatement. Superintendent Law.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Last month and at our study session and then in December at our formal board meeting, we went through new course proposals. Since that time and during that time, the high school has been working on Aviation Two and our new Momentum course structure. And they had intended to pair Aviation with either Chemistry or Physics and realized after talking with students that that was gonna limit interested students who had either taken Physics already or taken Chemistry already. And so they were looking for another path to get students credit and elective credit potentially. And the likeliest course came up to be Meteorology. However, Meteorology was eliminated as a course over five years ago due to low enrollment. So in order to pair that course, the board needs to formally reinstate it. Tonight, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning and Instruction, Dr. Amy Ladue will give just a brief update and we will likely put this on the consent agenda next month.
Thank you Superintendent Law, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Superintendent Law stated, typically we come to you with new courses, with title changes, or with deletions. Tonight, we're here to talk to you about reinstating a course. As Superintendent Law mentioned, you know, we're obviously developing Momentum as kids are in that course and as it's evolving and interests continue to evolve. Student focus groups were completed and as a part of that, Meteorology was identified as the best opportunity for students. That would not be the only course paired. The Aviation Two Flight School Two is a year-long course. And Meteorology would be a half-credit course that would be paired with that, but the current aviation teacher is also licensed to teach and therefore can actively integrate that content, creating an efficiency as well. And then also, they have identified that they would pair that course with Econ, which is an existing course currently paired with our Transportation course that looks at careers and global commerce. This would be similar in pairing it with Aviation because we'd be looking at economics topics through the lens of the aviation field. And so we feel that this creates a great opportunity that would allow all interested students to have a good path forward, meet a graduation requirement, as well as some elective credit, as Superintendent Law mentioned. So we are interested in bringing that back to you for reinstatement.
Any questions? Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Well, then we will put it in the consent agenda for approval to be added back to the skipper log for the 25, 26 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a report from the Facilities Task Force. Superintendent Law.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Last spring, the board approved and chartered a task force to spend time, over about nine months, understanding the needs of our unique facilities across our system. I don't wanna steal too much thunder from the report, but a very robust committee met aggressively throughout the year and even extended their time to be able to come up with a presentation they could all support. That task force was co-chaired by Executive Director of Finance and Operations Paul Bourgeois and Carrie Lindberg. Tonight, they are here with members of the task force to present their findings. I'll tell you that this presentation is one of many. Likely three or four, potentially five presentations the board will hear. Tonight, we'll lay the foundation. We'll come back again at a study session in January, potentially in February, and again in March. If the board was to choose to make a decision and say, yes, we are completely persuaded to make an investment in our facilities and ask our community, there is a March deadline for the state of Minnesota to give us feedback on this in order for the board to give timely process to it and then put it on the ballot. That does not mean that you're going to a vote. That doesn't mean that we have to make that March deadline, but should all those things align, I'm saying at the start of this, there is an early decision point in March, and we'll cover that. With that, Ms. Lindberg.
I'd just like to throw in, I'm not gonna be doing too much talking tonight because this is a community task force, right? So I just wanna take an opportunity to thank everybody who served on the community. You'll hear more about what a great group it was in a wide cross-section of demographics across the community. And so we made our list and checked it twice. And what you're getting tonight is, being the holiday season, it's kind of the un-mold cider before we start working on it and spicing it up. So with that, Carrie, all yours.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Lindberg, and I have had the pleasure of working with Paul Bourgeois and this task force over the last nine months. I can't believe we're sitting here. It feels like we were just here. As you know, this task force was born out of the school board goal for excellence in leadership and organizational support. The task force was created last spring. The school board authorized us to go out for applications for the task force in February, and we solicited applications from the community. And we ended up with a group of 27 members, many of whom are here this evening, who have really dedicated so much time and effort over the last nine months. And we're excited to present the findings tonight. Just a little bit more about the task force itself. It really is a cross-section of the community that represents, I think, really what Minnetoka is all about. We have family members from E all the way through 12th grade. We have members that are represented geographically across Minnetoka. We have some empty nesters. We have some district staff, teachers, and APARA, as well as some district administration that's also sat on the task force. So I feel like this group is well-represented in the community, and we're excited to present the findings tonight. Just some specifics. We had 10 elementary representative families, nine middle school representatives, 11 high school. Many of the task force members had more than one child and some had one at each level. Five empty nesters, two teachers, APARA, and three open enrolled families. So, and many of them are here this evening. We've asked a few of the task force members to help us present the findings tonight, and Pam Langseth is going to kick us off.
Good evening. My name is Pam Langseth, and I wanna start out by just saying to you guys, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve. All of us really have enjoyed it a lot. We feel it's critical work for our community and its investment in its schools. And we've really been honored to serve in this way, on this task, and represent our community and their thoughts. So as we go through this and in the days, weeks, months, maybe years to come, feel free to call on us at any time if you have any questions. But let me tell you a little bit about myself so you know why I'm on this. I'm a 25-year resident of this community. I live in Shorewood. I'm the parent of three men who are graduates of this beautiful district. I was a former school volunteer, did a lot of different things. PTA and PTO were vital at one point in this district. I was referendum campaign chair for a couple of referendums, and I was a 12-year board member of the district and went through this process myself. So I'm familiar with what you're sitting and trying to grapple with. Why would somebody participate in this? I've gotten asked that over and over. Why would you do this? We all care, every person that's sitting here. We care a lot about our community and we care about our schools. Each of us has invested a lot of time. Many of us have invested our money through our tax dollars in this district. And we believe that it's important that our facilities support the needs of staff, students, and the community. Education's changed a lot since I was a kid. It was a stand and deliver content method. Maybe all of you experienced that as well. And as you well know, it's very different today. It's very collaborative. It's very experiential. It's much, much different. And our buildings have to reflect that and support what our students need and our staff needs to educate them. So with that, let me move on. The charge to the task force, as you know, was to support the school board as it works to meet future instructional needs by assessing each district facility and looking at the ability to support current and future instructional needs and to develop recommendations for potential future actions that you might take at some time. We had a good group. We met for a long time. We went through a process where we reviewed priorities, recommendations. I'm gonna go through building reviews, a wrap-up and final recommendations as we go through this. And we met, what is it, 15 times between April and November. And we met at all the buildings where instruction of some kind occurs. So we have firsthand knowledge of walking through that, which I will say was eye-opening to a former board member in some places, so it was good. So let's walk through the process. First of all, this. Every one of us has one of these, and it represents every single presentation that we had. There's a lot in here. I know what your packets are like. This one was pretty hefty, I have to admit. So it began with a survey. And in late spring, as Carrie said, the district interviewed or surveyed all of our teachers and staff regarding the needs that they believed needed to be in the issue of their buildings. The results were shared with building administration, and then they incorporated them into their presentations that they gave them. We heard presentations from all building principals and assistant principals. And the presentations varied. Some of the principals really felt that everything should be stated. Other people called it to need. So it varied as to what their approach was, but you'll see what those are as you go through it. We also had many specific, departmental-specific presentations, and you can see the list that's here. Things from the Art Center with Trent Boyham to activities with Ted Schultz, Christine Breen on special ed and student support, Jackie Geddy on communications, Amy Ladue on what topics for instruction kind of things, Mike Dronein, our former technology director, Amanda Faye, the current executive director of technology, and then Scott Gerlick are talking about security. On top of that, we reviewed a few things. And we reviewed enrollment trends. We reviewed opinions of residents via a district survey. We went through marketing activities. We went through the financial status and projection of bonds that you know Paul always does. And we also saw some designs and costing for the potential designs and things that you're going to see. So we've gone through a lot. Each meeting had a very specific format. We met at 12 specific sites, and in each meeting, what we did is we did this. We had introductions, learned who the leader was that was presenting things. Paul gave us a historical presentation on the building, which included photos from way back when, so you could see how the site has morphed over time and see where the additions were. Talked about some of the limitations that some of the sites have due to different land issues that are present, as well as went through the floor plans and how different timing of additions and changes had been made. Building principals and assistant principals presented the results of the staff survey, and they talked about what they thought were the priorities or the needs based upon those surveys. We then took tours of every single building, and as we walked, we had lots of conversation, lots of questions to ask and everything. And we came back together after those tours and talked about what we'd seen. We asked a lot of questions. And finally, at the end, we identified what we thought were the most important issues and priorities based upon what we have seen and heard at that point in time. In November, we got together and had two final discussion meetings. We'd hoped, I think, it was going to be one, but it was a lot more than we thought, so it took two. Prior to that first meeting, what we did is we went through and we rated all items that were on the list, either high, medium, or low priority. And a numerical rating was given to each of those things in order to level-set what was most important to the committee. We reviewed that list and discussed that list at the final meeting. And we also reviewed the schools to see which schools we thought were most important. So from a school standpoint, we ranked the schools in this order, and you'll see them. And the middle schools became the most important thing, and we had committee agreement on that. 100% of the committee viewed Minnetoka Middle School East as a priority, and 92%, or 23 out of 25 of us, said the same for Middle School West. That far supersedes any of the other buildings, and they go in this order. So for whatever that's worth as you look at this information. We then went and ranked all the priorities that we had. So there are many, many more items that came up beyond these priorities that are listed, but these are the ones that we felt based upon, we know and what our priorities were, were the things that happened. And you'll note that the top six are MMW and MME facility issues. Other items that were talked about that were not included, and this is not in all of them, but we did talk about them. The Art Center, the renovations to the Art Center as well as the black box expansion, the possible fieldhouse at the high school, additional play equipment for some playgrounds, parking lot issues that needed to be addressed, color schemes, and more. And those, while they are important to people and they are good things to do, we felt that the list that is here represents the list that really is priority for our buildings to do what we do best from an instructional standpoint. With that, we're gonna move to a building-by-building review, and I'm gonna pass it off to Charlie Cannon.
Well, good evening and thank you, Pam, for that introduction. And also, thank you to all of you. A little bit of background about myself. My name is Charlie Cannon. I was born and raised here in the early 50s, represent five generations of Cannons. Graduated mom, dad, grandma, and then graduated here in 69. My sister graduated in 72, and our son graduated in 06. We all have various opinions on it, so I'm gonna give you it from my point of view. But this has been a true honor to be in front of you, to be asked, to be in front of you. And just wanna make sure you know we serve you, not the other way around, and anything we can do to help. I start with, I'm going through four buildings. I'm gonna start with the middle schools. I have been on the board. I was the board, sorry about that. Director, vice chair, and chair. And so certainly have a high degree of respect for everything that you do. But anyway, we started, as Pam said, in the middle schools. We did that because, and we thought that was the first priority because of the fact that not as much has been done in the last decades there, and so that's why we started there. I'm gonna take you through Minnetoka Middle School East first. They're very, very similar as they were built together. Spent less time on West. It's very, very similar. But we, I got reconnected with, in Minnetoka Middle School East, with Pete Dimmitt. And as Pam said, he ended up taking us through the staff survey. I will take you through those results, and he gave a great presentation, represents us very well over there. And here's what the detail was, and I'll follow the one through five on the screen. But first of all, the lack flexibility instructional space, and this was the large and small portion of it. The primary discussion focused around five points. Small breakout spaces, testing spaces, quiet rooms, rooms teachers needed to meet with students, which is really important, and then a space for larger groups of students to meet. And we talked heavily about that, and these were the priorities out of a long, long list. Then we went to the large group performance entities. The current auditorium stage space is kind of unique, and it's attached to the cafeteria. And it's unique, but it presents a problem in terms of seating spaces. Performances can happen there, which is great, but they can only happen when there's no meals being served there. So this space is limited to 420 people by fire code, and a larger space would allow to take care of the problems and the conflicts there and also make it a better place for experience for all the students. Then we went to the science classrooms, and this one's pretty simple. The school needs additional science classrooms to replace two regular-sized classrooms that have been converted to science over the years, but they're very, very small. So this is a numbers issue and it's a size issue. And we wanna add, they wanted to add classrooms that would turn, free up the space and convert it to small groups and also large groups. Pete Dimmitt, the next is the staff restrooms, and there's a little story behind that. When I met with Pete for the first time when I was on the board, he made it a point to tell me that, you know, Charlie, the difference between your job and a teacher's job is the fact that you're not in front of your customers all day long. And he indicated that that's a huge difference. And so the more effort you can put into those, that classroom and the world of a teacher and APARA is critically important. And restrooms came up quite a bit, and I was really surprised at how far they have to walk, how many people they gotta walk through just to go to the bathroom. And so that came up high on the list, and you'll hear that from others as well. But that became pretty important. And then gymnasiums. I mean, this is basically, we have four PE classes and we have three gyms, and having another gym there would be much more favorable. And one of the things I learned, not only Pete, but all of them, that, you know, they really came in from a needs versus wants. And while that's gotta be fleshed out a bit, it was really important to see. So those were the things that happened in Middle School East. Now, if you go down, if you notice the slide, they're all very similar, and they are similar. So I'm not gonna take you through them, but those large categories of lack of flexible instructional space, large groups, classrooms, restrooms, and gymnasiums were all the same. And I did go there at West. You don't have to bring out my transcripts, by the way. No need to do that. But anyway, then, all these buildings are favorites of mine, being around so long, but I'm gonna take you through the Minnetoka Community Ed. And got, again, reconnected with Tim Lifton. Our time goes way back with all of the biking and stuff that he's done, but also, my wife is an APARA there for 27 years, so we have a nice connection in there. It's a beautiful facility. He's taken care of it very well. Some numbers on that facility, 77,000 square feet. It was completely gutted in 2009, so it's in great shape. And then additional things happened in 2020. Let me just take you through those very quickly. We added 20 classrooms, a new playground, a large conference room, an event room, and you know that is the Deep Haven Room, which is very well-used and very well-populated. There is new and expanded lobby and reception area, three dance studios, and 13-inch classroom, restroom. So it's really, really a nice place. There's two things that is needed. One is early childhood family education classrooms. And the other, if you've been there, and I'm sure you have, it's pretty, parking's pretty tough. Not that that's unusual. Anyplace busy in this town, parking is a problem. But they have to park on the other side and whatnot. And so what we're looking at is a, and I'm sorry, oh, there we go, additional parking spaces, perhaps with a deck on the south side, which is on the left as you look at it from the road. And it could be a deck parking allowed by, if it's allowed by the city of Deep Haven. So that would be a nice upgrade for that facility, and thanks to Tim for all he does. And then the Minnetoka Education Center, you know that as the building across the street from the high school. I think it's called the TSP Building. And that was purchased and constructed in 2001 by Nick Correll, if you know Rick, and we purchased it in 2016. And that housed a lot of the Vantage Program and the Momentum Program, which is an incredible success in the community. In 2024, those classes were moved over to the beautiful building that we now have it, which is amazing. And so now, there's no immediate needs, but it does allow for additional space for what the board chooses to do with it. So that pretty much sums mine up, I believe. I will make a couple of final comments. I'm very, very proud to be a student here. Didn't know it then. And I wanna thank everybody here for taking your time and effort on this. I will, when I sat in your positions, I was pretty new, and I was a rookie, and I didn't really know what I was doing, but I had a lot of support from Pam and all the other people. These are big decisions to make, and make sure you understand you've got a lot of support. And anything you need from me or any other group, we're here to service you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm introducing you.
Members of the school board, Superintendent Law, administration staff. My name is Patrick Beckers, and I'll be presenting today on a couple more buildings, the high school, Clear Springs, and Deep Haven. Since 2009, I've been a member of the community. I know some of you here at the table today. Over that time, I've had three children go through. Some are still in the school district. I have been involved in a variety of different leadership programs within the community, both past, present, and definitely looking at the future. I had a family member who was a school board member, just like all of you, so I'm intimately aware of the hard work and dedication that all of you put into this. It is appreciated. All of us in the community do appreciate that. Thank you again for the opportunity to be a part of the commission. It is an honor to serve and to help guide you and advise you to what the community feels about our schools, and that's why we're here, for you, to learn more. And I'll echo what Pam and Charlie both said earlier, that we are available to all of you with questions or concerns about what we did, what we need, what we hear. So talking about the high school today, we spent two different sessions at the high school. Both were three hours, if not longer. There's a lot going on at the high school. It was really great to learn about all of the different things going on at the high school. So one of our meetings was with Principal Erickson and the Fine Arts Center Director, Trent Boyham. So we got a chance to learn about the learning spaces from Principal Erickson and then really get a chance to learn about the awesome fine arts program that we have at the high school. Fun facts about the high school in 1952. It was originally 146,000 square feet and change. Fast forward to today, we're at about 577,000 square feet. Fun part about the meetings, Paul's presentation always started out with what the schools looked like in the beginning, and then we went through each change over time and saw how different they were from beginning to end, and the high school is no different than that. The high school sits on about 106 acres, and 49 of those acres are unusable wetlands, which, you know, we'll see in the other schools. That does always present a challenge to us when we look at space throughout the district. In 2007, I think it's important to notice, our enrollment was 27, 2,768. In 2023, it was 3,548. So you can see the growth of the school. Principal Erickson talked a lot about experiential learning as we move throughout the building. Programs like Momentum, IBAP, Minnetoka Research, and Vantage, and the importance of space as it relates to those programs. He talked a lot about the, what he's done in his tenure around space at the high school. So things like the elimination of computer labs when the iPads came in and how we reutilized that space, the elimination of lockers for more collaborative spaces, tables, couches, et cetera. And then really working within the classroom and trying to look past that fixed furniture, forward-facing idea, and introducing more collaborative, you know, furniture with wheels, mobile furniture to try and create that next-generation classroom. Meeting with Trent was fun. I didn't know a lot about our fine arts program, but destination program for students from all throughout the metro, throughout the state. People wanting to open and roll into our district just to be a part of it, learning about all of the successes that the program has had with people in the industry on Broadway and different things. So really a unique, special advantage to our schools. We did a tour of the Fine Arts Center and the Black Box, and Trent had some ideas on things that he could improve or see improvements there. Trent talked about the Black Box being able to do more. The seating in it isn't adequate for what we, or what he would like to see, and the storage in the space is not good for sets and different things. He also talked about scheduling challenges at the Fine Arts Center with the demand from our elementary and our middle schools. It becomes, everybody wants it. It's a kind of a gem of the district, and that makes it, that makes scheduling hard. So that's what we learned from Trent. Ultimately, like Pam talked about in the process, we were presented with a list of ideas, and the task force kind of zeroed in on some that we felt were really important priorities. And so one of those was remodeling the student services area. So quick facts, there were eight counselors, and now there's 12. The space is not set up for 12. You know, college, for those of you who have children in college, a lot of that stuff is done virtually now when you're interacting with your counselors, so that space isn't, wasn't designed for that. Our Relate counselors, if you're familiar with Relate, the Relate counselors in the building are in a different space than that room today. And we just felt like it was important that we remodel that space to be able to accommodate for kind of the changes in the way students interact and engage with our counselors. We talked about updating additional classrooms with more collaborative spaces and furnitures. There are still spaces within the high school where we do have fixed furniture. We felt like- We felt like that was a success that Jeff really talked about. And we felt like that should be continued in the high school in all of the spaces. Redesigning the fitness center, does anyone know where the fitness center is? Yeah, you can kind of see it when you come in. It's got the big glass. So aviation currently is up in the loft. And we felt like that fitness center could kind of could be repurposed a little bit more efficiently, along with that space in the loft being used more efficiently. So looking at a way to relocate that fitness equipment and that activity somewhere else and then utilizing that space there for aviation program. And and you'll hear this, this is a reoccurring theme in all of our buildings. We did all think that adding staff restrooms to the high school to make it more convenient for our staff was a really important thing. And we all agreed that that was one of our priorities. Next, we met with Activity Center Director Ted Schultz. Along with the arts and the academics, activities at the high school, it's pretty busy. There's a lot going on, a lot of students involved in not only sports, but different clubs and various activities throughout the high school. So Ted talked to us, just to perspective today, just with varsity programs, there are 33, about to be 35 varsity level activities at our high school. We're going to be adding boys volleyball and boys badminton. So, oh, oh, I'm sorry, girls badminton. Move it up here. Okay, girls badminton, boys volleyball. So a lot, a lot of things happening. Strengths, according to Ted, Ted feels the strengths at the high school from an activity standpoint, things like the Pegel Center, Vets Field, Einar Anderson Stadium, the Commons, the Forum. And we have five turfed rectangular fields throughout our facilities. We're fortunate enough at the at Minnetoka High School, we've been able to partner with local community organizations to help us develop some of those turf fields. And it really is truly a, it is a good partnership with our community to help. It's unique, it is unique for our our area. But it does put us in a strong place from an outdoor space standpoint. Things that we could use some, where we landed after listening to all of it, things that we felt needed to be done in terms of activities. The wrestling practice gym, so if anyone's ever been in the wrestling area, it is it is older, we have columns with pads on it, it's buried down in the basement. It really, we all felt, wasn't up to Minnetoka standards for for that particular activity. We all felt like finding a new facility for our wrestling team was going to be a priority. And then finding a way to reutilize that space in the basement for some other purpose. So the wrestling practice gym was really important. Gymnasiums, we all agreed that more gymnasium or gym space was a priority. When you look across similar schools in the metro, we are at the bottom in terms of available gym space. Just a quick note, Edina has 13 total courts available. Minnetoka today, I believe, we were at five total spaces, total courts. So the need for more gym space is real and we all agreed with it. So finding ways to add gym space, creative ways to add gym space in our in our high school was really, really important to us and one of our priorities. Moving on to Clear Springs. So we met with Principal Kurt Carpenter and Assistant Principal David Wicklin. Since Kurt started 21 years ago, there's been nine additions on that building. There's 37 full size classrooms. Unique about the building, the specialists all have their own space at Clear Springs. There were no specialists on any carts. There are 850 students roughly at the school. Kurt really felt like his school was sized perfectly for that from a classroom standpoint. Highlights that we found about Clear Springs that we all liked, the southeast gym being available for performances. Kurt really loves the courtyard there. If you've ever had the opportunity to do the tour, if you've had kids go to school there, he's really proud of that courtyard and he should be. I will tell you, he impressed all of us with the robot lawn mower. His stories about how he used to come mow the lawn before the robot was brought in. Apparently, okay, he got married there, so. Kurt is very, very proud of his school. It was actually a joy to do a tour with him. You know, very, the security, the funded playgrounds with his partnership with the PTO, he's really, he was really happy with those things. The things that he felt that he needed, we really all agreed with him on. So when you look at our recommendations, we were really lockstep with what Kurt was asking for. Staff restrooms, once again, having larger special education space was really important to him. And also that having more small group and flexible space was a priority, definitely, for Kurt at Clear Springs. Deep Haven, I believe Deep Haven is our smallest elementary school, if I'm not correct. So fun fact, in 56, it had 46,000 square feet roughly. And today, there's about 79,000 square feet. We met with Principal McGinley and we landed on two things that were very important to Principal McGinley that we did agree with. The gymnasium, there isn't enough space. We all agree that there there is not enough space for physical education classes there. Oftentimes, their PE classes are doubled up in their gyms. So we all agreed that more gym space at Deep Haven was a priority. And then small group spaces, you'll hear that as a theme. So having, we identified flex space and meeting space for staff as a top priority at Deep Haven. And you'll see in some of the projects, you'll see a reflection of those things. Okay, thank you for your time.
Good evening, musical chairs here. I'm Karen Jordan. I've been a resident of the district for seven years, community member. I have a student at the high school. And it was a great honor to be on this task force. One thing that I'd say as we were traveling around the different schools, it's very evident the pride that the principals have in their schools. Every school has its own character. And it's it's amazing to see the phenomenal places that our students are able to learn. And we appreciate all the work that you do to make this possible as well. As a task force, we looked at each school through the lens of how we ensure that every student in Minnetoka has access to comparable buildings so that no matter which school students attend, they have a similar experience in terms of facilities. Particularly looking at spaces like media centers, science classrooms, music rooms, and gymnasiums. A small group space was a common recurring theme. It's hard to understand what that means when you're touring the buildings during in the evening. So I toured MME and Excelsior Elementary during the day when the students were present to gain an understanding. There was also some urgency around additional staff bathrooms. That did not require any additional information to understand. At each school, Paul presented us with great historical information and it was phenomenal to go back. Some of these buildings have been around, well, let's lot longer than all of us, that's for sure. And I want to give a shout out to the district. As you, we were walking around touring, you could see that really, I feel like every nook and cranny has been used and tonkered up the, you know, you didn't find any areas that you're wondering like, well, why aren't they using that space? Because guess what, they are using it. And I think we felt good about that as a task force, that there is not space in the district where you could say, oh, that's empty and it should be used, it's constantly being used. And also, they've done a phenomenal job of maintaining the buildings and upgrading and keeping things. Sometimes principals would bring up an issue and Paul's like, well, that's already, that's already, we got the, that's already going to be done next summer, that's, you know, already in the works. So I think that we can feel, you can feel good as a school board that that in that area, it's top notch. One of the schools that that we looked at was Excelsior Elementary. Principal Smazel and Assistant Principal Breen showed us around there. Obviously, the families love the historic auditorium and the flavor. It's, of course, a very unique school with with quite a lot of character. What the things that we, after touring it, came up with is lobby reconfiguration. They need a larger nurse nurse's office. I believe there's only three beds in there maybe, which is not, as we go into like the flu season and things, probably is not going to be enough. So they need some more space there. Staff bathrooms in the upper levels of the tower, the second and third floor, there are no staff bathrooms. So again, an urgent recurring theme. Some small group space. As I was walking around that day with Principal Smazel, you know, kids are in the hallways trying to, you know, do some collaborative work and they really could use a little more designated space. Again, recurring with other buildings as well. And then a second music room. Part of keeping the elementary schools running like as smooth is having the correct number of, obviously, rooms and gyms and that. And having them located in such that there's not huge traffic jams. It's like a little, you know, city as people are going from class to class. We also toured Groveland. Principal Gilbertson, very proud of the building, has, there's some great space there. It's, but that's where we noticed the what happens is kind of a log jam. If you don't have enough of the rooms, like the music rooms and located in certain areas, it takes a long time for the students to get down to their classroom, to do their lessons and then back. And then there's a lot of traffic. So they could use a second music room as well and some more small group, small group rooms. And again, additional restrooms, staff restrooms. Yep, which, they are all up to code. All the buildings I do want to say are up to code. It's just that more is a little better in that area. Anyway, and then Minnewashta, which was originally constructed in 1938, is that right? Paul knows all these, you know, if you ever want a historian here, it's Paul, he knows all the details. There was 6, 6,300 square feet. Today, it's 117,000 square feet. Principal Andrews did a great job of showing us around. One thing that came up from the tour is a media center. As we toured the buildings, you started to get a feel for what seems is an adequate media center and what is not quite what we would call adequate, you know, we'd want something better. And that came up in Minnewashta. Staff restrooms and then some more collaborative, flexible, kind of small group learning spaces also for Minnewashta. I think that covers it. That does cover it. All right. And then we got to tour scenic heights. Principal Walker and Assistant Principal Sneddon took us around. And, you know, I'm not trying to say they wanted to keep us in the dark, but the electricity did go out. So we were touring around. It was a storm, it had nothing to do with Minnetoka School District. It just, it just happened to be that, you know, that August night, then there was that storm and the electricity went out. But you know what, as you would expect in Minnetoka, that did not stop the tour. The flashlights came out and we really still got our tour of the place. They are super proud of the building and the and the staff. And like I say, they just kept on, kept keeping on. One thing that they was fun is they they love their kids run the station room. They have their own kids doing their thing. So there's a lot of great activities going on in these buildings, so we want to be able to support them. At the end of the night, the task force identified small group spaces and more staff restrooms for those, for that building. Otherwise, we're here as a task force to help in any way. There's lots of us, and I'm sure that anyone, any of us presenting or who were participants would love to be helpful in any way possible. And I think I'm yielding my time to Pam to wrap it up.
So lots to consider, I'm sure. When we met in November, we had a lot of different kinds of conversations on recommendations. So this next section is some disconnected kind of thoughts, but important thoughts. First of all, that ranking of priorities, it's important to know that our committee all agree that that is the right ranking. We are very supportive of that in the way it looks. And that the fact that the two middle schools are the highest priority, we all are on board with that. There are three kind of key key themes, I think you picked up. The need for large group flex spaces that help flex learning styles and different kinds of opportunities for instruction. Large spaces in buildings which allow bringing the entire community together to build the community of the building. And then through that, both of those freeing up ultimately different kinds of spaces within the buildings for teaching and learning. Those are common themes, I think, in every single building that we saw. We also felt strongly that the elementary school should be equitable. So the, for example, the media center at Minnewashta is subpar compared when you look at at other other media centers. So working on that. The student services area at Minnetoka High School, the big difference is it's just different today. They need different things. You need to bring together all of the support services that kids need in one space. And that space just needs to be reconfigured to make that happen. We all love the courtyards. We think they're wonderful, use them. Every every school is proud of them, we want to make sure they're they're continued. A common theme that happened many, many times we talked about was land acquisition. And I know when I was on the board, we acquired different kinds of land, things pop up. And we encourage you guys to be really, enable these guys to find those pockets because we need land. We're landlocked, as you know. The TSP Building was something we bought, we never knew what we'd do with it. But guess what, it's working and it's going to work in a better way going forward. So be open to that and encourage your staff to do that. Community Ed is an important piece of driving the engine of Minnetoka. You get kids into the system as little people, they stick through. And so that's a vital piece in making sure that that facility meets the needs of of our community is important. Outdoor space, don't lose it. You know, it can be used for so many great things. Kurt does a wonderful job at Clear Springs. He's probably does one of the best jobs of using his outdoor space. But there's other examples at buildings and to the extent that they can be fixed up and utilized is great. The non-revenue sports, wrestling and gymnastics and other things, it was embarrassing to go to that lower level. If you haven't done it, I encourage you to go to it. Talk about a subpar experience for kids in our school district. And not, it doesn't have to be the best thing in the whole world, but it does need to represent the standards of Minnetoka. And and looking at those with a good lens like that is important to do. Finally, you know, focusing on the three A's, academics, arts, and academics, arts and athletics. What was it? Yeah, those are, that's important. As board members, Charlie and I talked about a couple of things and and Pat too, with giving that Katie's on, has been on the board. We felt that this was really, it was, this is an incredibly great exercise, very, very powerful. We thought it was very important, but it's one facet of what you need to consider as you're looking at all of this. And just remember that, and we know you know that. We know that you will consider all the factors that need to be be put in place that impact the financial status of this school district. And we trust that, we know you will. Two main considerations we encourage you to think about. These projects can be done in so many different levels. I've, I sat in one of my very first meetings and had this kind of a presentation, went, what in the world do we do with this? But low and behold, in 12 years, every single thing on that list got done in some way, shape or form. And Paul and his team and others and David will guide that and and it'll work itself out. So whether they do it once, you do it in piecemeal, it will come to fruition, how it makes sense and will make sense for the district. Remember, operations are your key thing. You can't have all this facility stuff if you don't have kids in seats, you don't have teachers. And so your primary thing has to be right now getting that out, those operation and tech levies raised so that you've got the money. And I know David's working vigilantly and with the staff and case and all that at the Capitol. And hopefully, that will come through. But timing and and which goes first is going to be really, really important. And so we encourage you just to really do all of that stuff and sustain this great, this great program we all have. So on behalf of the people that are here, raise your hands if you're on the committee. So everybody knows who's on the committee that's here. Obviously, there's a group of us. You owe them a debt of thanks. I mean, they did a lot of hard work and we had fun doing it. And we all appreciated the opportunity to participate and to share this tonight. So that's it. If you have any questions, feel free to contact us, ask us now, whatever it is. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam, thank you, Carrie, thank you, everyone here who was on that task force and everyone who couldn't make it tonight who was on the task force. It does look like an awful lot of work and we have a lot to get through. Any questions or thoughts we want to talk about while we're here together?
As I said earlier, at the January study session, Mr. Virgil, I will come back with all of these things flushed out with pictures and prices. So the board will have a sense of what was, what were we really talking about? Their potential. Their potential pictures and prices, but a little bit better idea. If the board's interested after that time, we would go to every building and try to connect with community members too over the next six weeks before the board would have next. But this will come back with all of these things, like I said, some visual for the public to see and some financial.
Yeah, go ahead, Kimery.
Just real quickly, thank you for the very intentional organizational structure with which this happened is just, I could just tell there was a lot of work put into how this all went, proceeded. Secondly, is there a bid process that goes through? Like, are there different companies that you'll look to for part of the bid process for all of these projects? How does that work?
Well, if, yeah, if there's a referendum that would be run at some point in time, we would get bonding authority. Then what happens is, is you work on the design and you put it out to bid, just like we do with the long-term maintenance projects or like we've done with all the building additions in the past that we didn't need a referendum for because they weren't super massive in size, but they were substantial enough, but you needed a bid process to do that.
Okay. And one final comment, I liked how, I appreciated that the principals were specifying need versus want. I thought that was, I really appreciated that from our financial standpoint where we are right now. So thank you again for all of your work for everybody.
Sally.
Yeah, I'll just second what Kimery said about how this was organized. On the occasions, I was able to observe the committee in action. I was just struck by how clean the process was, how smartly you used that time that you had together. And it just, it just felt super inquisitive and open to suggestion, but then it all came together really neatly. And the presentation that we had in our packet tonight just really reflected as well that it just seemed really naturally to come back together based on the approach that you took. So thank you all for that. That was a heavy lift for everyone, and I know there's more to come, but thank you.
Chris.
I just want to add to all of the thank yous for everybody that's here. Fifteen meetings, hundreds of hours. I know most of you and know that this isn't the only thing that you do for the district. All of the things that you have done and to continue to give and serve and really help us through this process and echoing everybody else, the way it's formatted, needs versus wants and just, yeah, it means a lot. It's a big lift when you're talking multiple hundreds of millions of need for our district. And so it will be an interesting process to go through, but knowing that we have a robust community input to this and went through really help us as we go through this, so thank you.
Good luck. And thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, so I want to say a quick thank you as well, but I, just on the, like, one quick question, I was just wondering, going into this process and then coming out of it, you know, I noticed some cafeteria additions on a couple of those buildings, and I thought that that might crop up more. And I was just wondering if there's, if there was something that surprised you, that jumped to the fore of the need across the district? And if there was something that you expected to hear more about in our buildings but really didn't present itself as a need?
I think all of us were surprised at the condition of the middle schools. They're not bad. I don't mean to imply that at all. They are not bad. But when you go into the high school and then you walk into a middle school, it's a different feel. A lot of it's lighting and finishes, but that was, I think, a surprise to all of us. I don't think any of us really knew what to expect. I think we heard a lot of talk from different people and what they wanted, but we didn't know. So we learned a lot.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess we'll be talking more about this in January. Thank you again for all of your work. All right, next up, we have discussion of fiscal year '26 budget adjustments. Superintendent Law.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, in October, October 24th to be exact, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Paul Burjoua, presented to you a very detailed summary of our district and financial history, everything from 2000 forward, challenges with cap set on voter-approved levy and local optional revenue that the board authorizes, the portion of our budget that comes from the per pupil allocation from the state, our federal budget. Since that time, Mr. Burjoua and I have visited every school site and asked all of our teachers for feedback. We've presented, I think we're at over 25 different presentations when we've looked at all the different audiences we've presented to, including our case committee and our elected officials. Tonight, we're coming back with just some key points about that presentation and also a brief summary of feedback we've heard from our employees in our district after seeing these presentations. The next step would be in January, at our January meeting, to approve the targets for these reductions, certainly to aggressively address our underfunding at the state level. But the board, in order to implement these budget reductions and balance our budget for the next school year, the board will hear the presentation again tonight and at the next board meeting approve the targets. Mr. Burjoua.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Law and members of the board, Mr. Chair. Just a synopsis of the slides and we've been presenting. So again, we're looking at approximately, the current estimate is a $5 million deficit that we're trying to fill to get back to break even for fiscal year '26 in terms of ongoing revenues to ongoing expenditures. And that hasn't changed. It may change over time as we get additional information, if the legislature provides additional resources and things like that. That's where we're sitting at right now. And again, you can see that if doing nothing, we'd end up with about a 6.8% fund balance. And the fund balance itself is not, you know, we're not in business to make a big profit or whatever, but you have to have operational cash. If you don't have a big enough fund balance, that means you also don't have enough operational cash. You may end up having to do cash flow borrowing, which actually in a past life in another district, we had to do that because we were carrying a lower fund balance. So it actually costs you money just to be able to make sure you can make payroll. So, you know, you need a certain amount of money just to operate the district. And while, you know, $10 or $11 million to each of us individually is a significant amount of money, it's five or six weeks of operations for, you know, for the district. So that's where we're sitting at right now. And again, just a reminder, if we make reductions of $5 million this year, the future, it's like Tetris again, the future years drop down a little bit. So we end up with about a $2 million, $2.5 million reduction potentially the next year and the year after. Again, it all depends on, this has assumptions in there that the state is going to be able to follow through on its 2% plus inflation, up to maximum 3% on the basic formula, that we continue, which we will because we were able to prove it through '236, but to have our operating referendum at the same level plus inflation, but that we don't have an additional chunk of operating referendum coming in or anything of that nature. So again, we're fighting a good fight on that and hopefully that will change. So then, just the, enough, we went through with everybody how the, how the slices of our pie, so to speak, in terms of, other than personnel, are actually relatively small. And so the bulk of 88% of our operations is in salaries and benefits where it should be, including the bulk of that being teachers. Of that 88%, these are the percentages that each of these areas would represent. So teachers are about 2/3 of our overall budget, but of our 88%, teachers are about 75% of the 88%. So that's why those numbers look a little different, but the, those would be target amounts if we tried to do proportional adjustments. And so the suggestion, recommendation is to actually look at these target levels instead, so reducing somewhat the amount of dollar amounts that hit the teachers and paraprofessionals in those areas and taking some additional out of other areas. And then the fees, our fees, we pick up about half a million dollars worth of fees every year. So a 10% increase is a big increase on an individual basis for each person, but it'd be, it'll generate about $50,000 worth of revenue. So those are the proposed targets. Then just looking at some of the input that we have, early retirement was a suggestion. The one thing about early retirement, and I actually experienced that 30 years ago, but not that I early retired, but in terms of paying people to retire early, and the thing is, is you don't, what happens is, is you have to offer it to everybody. And so the people that you automatically have that are treading out, are going to retire anyway, you end up paying people who are going to retire anyway, the retirement dollar amount. And then what happens is you really are starting from being in the hole then. So it's really hard to catch up. And so that's, generally, you know, you'd have to get two to three times the amount of early retirements than you normally would just to break even after paying for the cost of the people who are going to retire anyway. We have, you know, monitoring district travel. Again, we have the items in there under consideration, looking to ensure that travel has minimal cost and minimal cost impact to the district and maximum benefit. Reduced administration contracts, those are all negotiated. Of course, as the district changes and as contracts come up, they can always consider being negotiated during the next round of negotiations. Increase fees, match staffing to enrollment, well, we pretty much do that. Eliminate building floating subs. That's something that we implemented particularly during the COVID years because we were having a hard time getting subs. And, you know, that's something that would be under consideration if our substitute situation is improved since then. So it's being looked at. Reduce in-district office staff, that's in process. Some school administrative staff in process. Streamline immersion costs under consideration. You know, immersion is in, all of our classes cost money. So the thing is, is immersion is a situation where you have to teach people to read in two languages, which is why most school districts who have an immersion program have it at one school, not across the whole district. So, but immersion for us is, that's a real driver to bring in, bring in additional students. Again, reduce specific positions. And you can see the number is relatively small in these. There's a reduction of special education staffing that, you know, it's in the hopper, but the thing is about that is we get reimbursed about 60% of the cost of every special education staff member. So if you reduce that staff, the net result is about a 40% savings, consider what is being reduced. The also, there's also maintenance of effort requirements where we have to maintain certain dollar amounts every year from year to year related to special education and various statute and federal regulations that we have to follow. Looking at having certain administrators or teachers on special assignments, doing some additional duties, reductions including future contracts to the cost of inflation, spend less on staff development. A long time ago, actually back in the early 90s, for a short time, we had this thing called the Qualified Economic Offer. Actually, Senator Skabel from Preston worked with me on the idea, and he actually got it passed at that time under Governor Carlson. But it was a situation where if a school district offered anything, all the dollars available, that was new money to the, to the, to the teachers association in the district, they didn't lose their right to bargain, but they were not able to strike. And that lasted for about four years and it got reversed in the early 2000s. But, you know, so you can't really, you have to work through the whole bargaining unit process with all your contracted organizations or contract organizations. Revenue generations, we're always looking to generate revenue. We get an incredible amount of donations. We get over $1.5 million worth of donations every year in the general operating fund. But those always typically come with a specific retirement, although I've been a big advocate for trying to do an endowment fund. I think our district would be unique enough that we could build up over time an endowment fund related to supporting maybe special things like the arts and athletics to maybe to kind of shield those things from potential reductions because those are the things that help a lot of students keep coming to school. If they're not interested so much in the specific academic things, but arts and athletics oftentimes are magnets. And spend less on buildings, charge students for enrollment. We can't charge students for enrollment. But spending less on buildings, again, that's a situation where it does not affect the general operating fund because, and it's hard for people to understand because in all of our budgets or in the corporate sector, private sector, everything goes down to one bottom line, including whether you replace a building or buy a new piece of equipment or what have you. And in, but with good reason, in government, in school districts, we have certain money that's earmarked by statute for operations, certain money that's earmarked by statute for maintaining the building, certain money that's earmarked by statute for buying stuff or like subscriptions for software or classroom equipment or a new lawnmower for the grounds crew. So those are the list of suggestions that we've received so far. And with that, I guess I would turn it back to Superintendent Law for further comment and direction.
We did, for each of these, we met and spent about an hour talking about how we would either additionally research or implement or consider. And, you know, our priority has been to maintain program and minimize class size. And so as some of these suggestions did one or the other, we've tabled them. So under consideration means if we don't have to do them because they're going to conflict with another priority, we're going to hold off. But most of these we're implementing, but we're sharing with the board. We're going to share them back out with our staff on what we've heard after break. And these guidelines, our feedback from our teachers in specific is that they've appreciated we've taken the time to go to every building and talk through all of these budgets. We would love to be able to impact legislation and not have to enact these. We specifically for teachers, we need to inform teachers their assignments by April 1st, and the legislation won't be done by then. So we will have to do, we'll do all of the reductions and come back. After the board approves a target, we'll come back and identify a summary. We won't list names of people, but positions and reductions so the board can say that these really happened. With that, we open up for questions and we'll be back again in January for the formal approval.
Any questions or discussion? Dan.
Thank you for running us through everything. I, I don't know if we've spent a ton of time talking about the fund balance and the need to preserve the fund balance and keep it above that 6% threshold, but I, at least from my chair, I just want to reiterate that I think that's a very, very important thing to do, even if we're in, even if we get ourselves to break even territory every year. If we're not adding to that fund balance, the percentage is going to drop year over year as our expenditures increase. So preserving that now while we can is going to be critically important to keeping us closer to a place where we can start growing it again.
Agreed. I guess I just wanted a little clarification. I think between the presentation and the comments about things that are under consideration, maybe what you just said, I think I lost the meaning of what under consideration means. My understanding, for example, is that we are doing some of these things now that say under consideration. Is that correct?
Mr. Burjoua, can you go back one page?
Sure. I'm sorry.
Maybe.
Maybe, if I don't fat finger it all. Sorry about that. Luckily, it's a small slideshow.
So, yes, monitor, limit district travel. We are doing that, and we're also considering it because we have some things, for example, we have teachers who need to get training for a course. So we can't implement, we can't say implementing because if a teacher next year is teaching something that requires certification, we're going to send them to get certified. So yes, that's a target, but I don't want to say implementing. Increasing fees, we haven't done it yet, but that's under consideration. We'll bring that back to the board. Matching staff to enrollment. We are implementing that, but some of the specific recommendations might have been eliminate this program, and we weren't there yet. And so it's, the concept we're implementing, the suggestion we might not be. Eliminate, reduce, building float subs. Some of our immersion programming, if we don't have those float subs, they won't get a substitute teacher who speaks the language of the instruction. Some of the building float subs aren't, so we're weighing the pros and cons of the impact of that. Generally speaking, if we can implement them, we will, but sometimes the way that they were written as a suggestion, we couldn't implement. So we, I don't want someone to say, hey, I gave you a suggestion to get rid of, you know, teacher Dan Olson. know, teacher Dan Olson, and I still sees here, I mean, the concept of the suggestion we're taking because it's worthy, but the exact wording we're not. So I, we-
A community member reading this shouldn't say under consideration means they're just patting you on the head. We've spent some serious staff time and effort to try and track down what does work and doesn't work from these suggestions.
Absolutely. We are, parts of these things you'll see in place and we'll bring the fees back. We're going to, we are going to match staffing to enrollment. We are just looking at those. Streamlining immersion costs, that, that might have been one that, like, the suggestion might have been move all immersion in Spanish to east and all the immersion in Chinese to west. That is one that we're truly not implementing this year. If we were continuing to cut, we would consider that. So it's a little bit of both.
Okay. Thanks. I just think it's important that people understand that we are taking the fiscal situation seriously. We have for years, but the rubber is really hitting the road. And so the fact that this says under consideration means active work at seeing whether these are things that will help us.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? Chris?
Just kind of a little bit going back to Dan's comment and just thinking about that target or timing of with all the staffing. And I think it makes sense to get to as close to balance as possible in this budget. But to your point, in consideration, as you start looking out that in future years, this board may want to consider going past that. I would think with the uncertainty with our push for to raise the caps that we're talking about, I think we probably need some time to look at the enrollment trends. You know, we're not really talking about our biggest driver of revenue, which is enrollment and, and the fact that we missed our enrollment target this year for lots of reasons. Now, is that going to be a trend? Are there other things that we can put in place? We can't count on that with this budget, so I'm not saying we should go under this target, but there's lots of other things. But yeah, I think you make a really good point, you know, to look at those, some of those drivers and allow some time. And if we get help from the legislature, which would only allow us to ask our community and we'd still have to ask and, and see if they were supportive of it, look at the enrollment trends or what we think along with all of the other things that we're looking at. Buys us some time, but I think there was some, and I don't know that it was here or just community chatter and some of the things that we heard about. You cut more or less, I mean, I think it's just a good point to, at least we're considering all of those. It makes the most sense with where we're at.
No, I, I agree. And I think that you make a very good point that, and I think timing wise, you know, the, we've got a new legislature that's going to sit down in January and it's a budget year. And if we get to the end of the budget year and there's no action, that might be a good benchmark for us to reexamine, are we just shooting for breakeven or do we need to have a deeper discussion on that front?
Yeah, I think it's all on the table at this point.
And maybe just to clarify, in case people are listening and going back, I said in miss an enrollment target, I don't know that that's actually true. Our enrollment dropped this year. If you look at this from the amended, our enrollment is, has, has gone down. This is really all I meant. That word means a lot to a lot of people, but that's, that's truly what I meant more than any-
Yep. Well, and it's important for the community to keep in mind that that, you know, the, the number of pupils who are getting per pupil money from the state or the district is huge. The dominant factor. On the revenue side, so. Okay. All right. Let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is discussion on board student listening sessions at MHS. Superintendent Law?
Mr. Chair members of the board, this is just an opportunity for you to share publicly what you heard from our students. The backstory behind this is we have, since I've been here and before, I understand, as a board visited with a group of students at maybe each middle school and the high school, but this year the board took the approach to pair up and visit with a grade level with the intent of shadowing that grade level twice a year till they graduate. So two board members are meeting with a group of freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors. And this is just an opportunity for the public to hear, what has the board heard from our students and what's your perspective of this new listening format? And so, open discussion for the board with each other and for the public to hear.
All right. Who wants to kick us off?
I'm on a roll today, so I'll keep going. More so on kind of what are we doing and my thoughts on it. You know, this board, and we've talked for years about increasing student voice and, and the ability for board members to hear directly from students in their environment about topics that, that we care about. We're mulling over all kinds of different ways and how, how to do that. This is just another way and for us to have a, a long-term investment in a school board student relationship with where we can follow kids all the way through. And, you know, depending on your timing on the board and the timing of the kids, I mean, that could be a four-year relationship and where you get to see. And Sally and I got to meet with sophomores and it was interesting because they still kind of remembered that middle school experience and what it was like to be in the high school, but they're not quite, you know, they weren't quite fully invested, I would say, or understanding like the high school experience and how to do different, start clubs and all of the different things that you would expect from a freshman and sophomore that may be a junior and senior. And so I think it's going to, it's a really good format. It was really fun to be there. I think as we go, you know, we go, we're not sure what to expect. They're for sure not sure what to expect. It's like, I get to get out of class.
Well, there's some of that, yeah.
But as they, as they go through it, the more, the time that we spent, the more comfortable. I think it'll, once we get, we won't have to reintroduce each other. Also just want to thank Superintendent Law for, for being there, helping to facilitate like that format very much rather than, we've done student listening sessions in the past where we're just kind of up there and, and, you know, good at facilitating. So at least I'll speak for myself. But so I think that was great.
Yep. And I'll add to that. Yeah, that was a great session with the sophomores. They were very engaged. I was much more than I anticipated they would, thanks in large part to your facilitation because you really got that out of that and got them talking right away. But everybody spoke and contributed at least once, if not more times. And one thing that I think was really smart about the approach we took to that was using the forum at the high school where we were sitting on the lower level, they were above us. I think that that had changed the dynamic a little bit, but they were all seated together. They were clustered so that they weren't like all in the back row far away from us, which can tend to happen and that worked really well. Sightlines were perfect for us. And so, yeah, I, I really look forward to continuing meeting with them because I can imagine those exchanges are just going to blossom as they get more confident and trusting in us that they can tell us what's on their minds.
Yes.
Just such a great observation. I guess I never thought about just the format of that, of that room anyway, but just how that they're above us and, you know, you can, there's some empowerment in that, whether it's conscious of it or not. Yeah.
Go ahead. Thanks.
Patrick and I met with the freshmen and Superintendent Law was there as well and I'll have to echo, he does have a way with students. And I just loved, one of my favorite parts of the board leadership role or the board role is being in the schools and seeing the, the magic that happens in the schools and especially with the students. We asked what the best thing about high school for the freshmen was so far and it was almost unanimous, they said the teachers, like exclamation point, the teachers. They love the teachers. One in particular came up through, I mean, just about everybody and I forget the name of the teacher. It was an AP, it was AP, I wrote it down, was it AP Spanish maybe? And they just kept saying, we love her, she's, she makes us feel safe and inclusive and welcome. One of the other things that, and we had such a good group, like a diverse group of students. There was robotics, there was choir, there were AP kids, there were music kids, there were just a, there were football kids, a really good group of kids. And I think some real leaders are going to come out of this group of freshmen as well. So I'm really anxious and excited to see them grow. And then one person wrote, I love best buddies. I mean, she said she just loved that program and I liked that program too a lot. And then the inclusivity of the high school was what somebody, one of the students said too. And I thought that was a really, a really nice thing to hear as well. So I, I just really enjoyed it. So thanks for, I, I wasn't sure that we had done that as a board before, but I really am glad that we're doing it now.
I mean, we've done listening sessions before, but this format is new, following the students. And I thought-
I liked it.
Having the freshmen, I was a little worried, would it be sort of all deer in headlights? And it was certainly not that.
It was not.
They were a very communicative group and so I think it, it bodes well for getting some feedback. And, you know, we talked about some of the things that, that they like. We talked about, you know, some of the stressors and it was nice to hear that directly from them as opposed to, you know, we all have insights as parents on whatever our kids or our kids' friends are stressed about. And then having a little bit of a, a different sample, I think was, was great. And looking forward to see how that shakes out maybe for the, I guess I'd be curious to hear if the, if the juniors or seniors were higher on that stressed out level yet with the college or end of high school approaching.
We, after the freshman group and Megan, Chair Selinger's not here, so I'll share some feedback. After the other groups, we asked the seniors about, do we need to do a better job supporting students who are coming in with this academic load? And I actually talked with Principal Erickson about, you know, what are some steps we can take as kids come to the high school to say, this will be stressful, here's how you work through it. Some students had wonderful examples of how they connected with the staff member and processed through it, but it wasn't consistent. The seniors acknowledged it and, you know, having done a lot of listening sessions, seniors are always the first to say, this school's finally got to figure it out. Our experience is wonderful because they're seniors. However, when we pushed back on that concept, they did give feedback that helping with stress. You know, some of the powerful things we heard through this session, because, because I was in all of them, were students saying, everyone says we need to have a trusted adult. How do I get one? You know, we just assumed that they know how to build those skills and that came through. Or you spent a lot of time working on how adults interact with kids. We'd love to see some of that on how kids interact with kids and we do some of that training, but not the same search institute training. And so there was some great insight about that that we'll take away, but the seniors are, were, yes, definitely two or three steps more confident and ready after they've been through the experience.
Yeah. Mike and I were with the juniors and I think they were, they were pretty comfortable in their own skin, having been in the high school for a couple of years. And some of them, you know, cited classes like the study skills class and things like that that really helped them set them up for success as freshmen coming in. But I don't know, it was kind of just a pretty relaxed, freewheeling conversation. They felt very, very comfortable to talk about whatever was on their mind. We were all over the map as far as what we were talking about, from academics to athletics to stress to sex and all of this. I mean, all of this stuff came up in our session. They were not holding back anything at all. So, and we probably could have gone on for another hour or two, but I think it just bodes really well for continuing these conversations and having this open dialogue in the future.
Yeah, Mike? Just to clarify a little bit, the conversation was about sex education and, and the timing was, just wanted to clarify.
Not just in general, yeah.
Students perspective that some students in the rotation of their health education, they weren't getting topics that were relevant until too late in high school. So, and the good news is the state is asking us to revisit our health education programming and so we'll have a chance to talk about that with our students. But one, one piece that, when Dan mentioned this, our students would say things like, we must have created a safe space because they said, you know, I'm a student who has an IEP or I'm a student who has a 504 or I'm a student with a disability. And in the group, my sense was students were pretty expecting or accepting of that and, and the student wasn't feeling like they'd be harassed. We, normally I give a stronger reminder about, hey, don't, don't take this private information. We were able to say as a reminder, but the students reporting felt very comfortable. So that was, that was a good, healthy sign for the school climate and for the climate of that listening session.
Yes, Chris?
I think just thinking and hearing everybody talking, when do these students, you get a diverse group of students. I mean, if you look, at least in ours, there, you had pretty much almost every corner. And, and again, similar people sharing different things about struggling with classes or IEPs or I'm really here for the athletics or I'm here for the academ, for the arts or all of the different things and really safe space. But there was also some back and forth where they were talking about different things and then challenging each other, but actually supporting each other in different things. Like, so, you know, we're, we're also creating a space where people that probably wouldn't be together are actually sharing their experience. And then, and then there was some dialogue back and forth, which is good. I mean, and will enhance there. And somebody's talking about future leaders and, you know, you start having this group of 25 that goes through and they have different connections in the hallway and different experiences. And you just see so much greater and you couldn't do this for the whole school, of course, but you start doing all these different little pockets and it all adds up.
Yeah, probably my single favorite experience since starting this back in January.
I guess I'm interested, maybe we should just talk a little bit more about the plans for the future. Is it a couple times a year? Is it more than two? And I think the other thing I'm curious about, maybe you've thought about this, but I'm just starting to think about now, are there particular sorts of information that we might try to elicit that we wouldn't do in just a one-off study session as we get this group that we are following a couple of times and hopefully over the years? Is there some, and I don't, I don't have a great plan for that, but I'm just sort of wondering, this format, this forum is a little different and how can we take advantage of that?
We, we are currently committed to a fall and a spring. We could certainly look at fall, winter, spring and that's really up to the board. But this year it'll be a fall and a spring. We cycled through some board goal topics about, one of the things that we talked to at least two groups about was, does Minnetoka do enough for students in the middle? Because we've heard that as feedback from the community and we dug into that. We talked about academic excellence and we talked about belonging in some fashion in every group and we tried to pull that in to feed some of our belonging efforts because we want to quantify that. We, we went into mental health a little bit with one of the groups, but there, we can certainly consistently add a question if the board's working on a topic. In the spring, I envision us loping back on some of those same questions to see how they view it after they've experienced your programming too. So, but I think this will evolve as we have interesting topics to talk about, but we also want to ground with measuring some things over time too.
Yes, Sally?
Yeah, the one that stood out to me was the conversation around the kid in the middle, right? And that was, got pretty robust discussion in the group period, so I'm very interested to hear if that evolves over time. Part of the, the robustness of that conversation was other students saying, this isn't a bad thing, right? It's okay to be in the middle. We understand though that you might feel pressured, but let's see it as an opportunity. You know, it was really mature conversation that they were having around that. And I will be interested to see if they relax into that and they're okay with that more over, over time or if they find a different path for themselves, who knows? But I think some, keeping us consistent theme or themes all the way through will be, will be good in addition to maybe some new things that we incorporate.
I had another idea, but being respectful of the board, it might be fun once during your time with those students, as a board member, to meet with them just one-on-one for half an hour and to get to know them and then, and then in the group. That's a pretty big commitment for your teams, but we, we can continue to expand on this. As it is, it gives that board, our board the narrative and for the public to hear this, when we introduce the groups, we say the board hears from adults a lot. It's important to balance that out with what our students- to balance that out with what our students' experiences are, and we lead every group with that, and then the students get excited to say, oh yeah, I'll tell you what it's like to be here. So we can, we can have this ebb and flow with board interest, but the more you feel connected to information at the high school, the more it'll help you govern.
Chris?
Just putting a plug in for Vantage and the Vantage Mentor Program, and I think a lot of us are or have been, so continue to plug for community, but just board members. I mean, that is one-on-one, once a month, on average, time with some, you know, in one of those programs. Maybe it's not as diverse as this group, but definitely brings a lot of feedback and pulse on, on the district and their experience, so.
Yeah, great point. All right, let's move on, forging ahead. Our next item is discussion on board meeting and study session dates, board leadership positions, and committee assignments for 2025. Superintendent Law?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, after soliciting feedback from members of the board about board leadership positions and visiting with some of you about that, it appears there's consensus on the following, that Board Member Leo Halloran would be willing to be board chair, Board Member Foss would be willing to be board vice chair, Board Member Olson is interested in maintaining his position as treasurer, and Board Member Vitale is interested in maintaining his position as clerk. We couldn't open up for discussion, but having heard from all of you, that would be the, you can decide how you want to deal with that. That was information I've received. Any conversation about that?
I've, I've heard similar things. I haven't talked to everyone, so.
I would say.
Does that sound good to you?
Thank you to Patrick and Kimery for your willingness. Someone that's been in seats, it's a, it's a very important, very rewarding, for sure, so. Been great as vice chair. Yeah, yeah. Chair, Kimery. Any chance you have to get a different perspective on the board? Clerk maybe doesn't do that as much, but Board Member Olson, Dan, you've been such a great advocate for that, and as we go into next year, a budget year, and all the different things that we can, you've really been a great advocate for bringing stuff back as well as to the community in a different way than necessity had to to the, decided that you're willing to continue. Not sure you need approval from everybody.
Well, I would share. It's a discussion, but Chair Selinger.
Who put a call in, you, Vitale? Geez.
I'm trying to get these cookies.
Chair Selinger is aware of those recommendations and supportive of those, or she shared that she is supportive of those. So I'm gonna, the next item is committees, and I'm going to recommend that upcoming Chair Leo Halloran probably should step down from the AMSD committee as we kick that off, and that someone else might be interested in picking that up. And then, so committees, people have generally said, I'm content with what I have. Current Chair Selinger said she's willing to pick up something else because she's stepping away from the chair, but this is an open discussion about committee assignments, if there's something they'd like to change.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm happy to step away from AMSD, that does get to be a commitment, and then with the other commitments of being chair. But I do recommend it as a great group, so if you have interest, raise your hand, because one, we ought to have somebody there, it's a great source of information, particularly going into the legislature. They have their own legislative priorities, which are very similar but not identical to ours, among other things, they don't, not all of the rest of the metro is at the cap for operating, but it's a very, it's a very good group. And so, that's my two cents about, I'm committed to remaining involved in CASE. I think we had a great kickoff to that, and we had a good first meeting with the legislators who encouraged us to hester them, so we are going to do so. Sally?
Yeah, so if this is the right time, I would like to express my interest in the AMSD. The schedule actually works particularly well with my current employment situation, so Friday morning would work for me, so I just want to express my interest in that.
Great.
Thank you. Does anyone have a committee that they were, they'd like to try something different or step off of?
That's an agreeable group.
Yeah, I mean, just put me where you need me. Sally, AMSD is picking up, is a big obligation. You have PTO, PTA, and special ed advisory and CASE, I think. CASE ties well with MSD?
I actually would be interested in talking to Megan about which one or two of PTO, PTA leaders and, and special education advisory. She'd be interested, and I would say that special education advisory is of particular interest to me, but I'm open to either one of those if she found those a good match.
I know she prefer, she had mentioned that daytime meetings work better, maybe she would step in for PTO and PTA.
Okay.
And I didn't ask her, but I, my impression is Megan enjoys remaining involved in teaching and learning advisory.
Hey, I get that sense, too. Any other potential changes? Board Member Rama Call, I've already offered you up to District 287. I know you're on the mental health advisory with the JED commitment, and Taka Care is still, okay.
It's pretty much right up my alley as far as some of the topics are concerned, so I'm very happy to be there.
Chris, you happy? You feeling, we're taking.
I'm like, Dan, put your, I don't want to step in anybody else's wants or needs. Or, the PTO, PTA would be for me.
Sure.
So if Megan, that would, I would, I think she's done. Katie split it before, so she gets it, knows the format, so.
That seems like a good fit.
But if it's not, let me know.
Sure.
And I'd be more than willing to split with other people. Maybe we need another plug, just missing meetings or that, so reminding myself, you can always fill in for each other.
Yeah, that's a great point. We don't always do that, but if you, if you have a conflict, send a meeting to your fellow board members, because we can, we can back each other up.
It's a good way to get some, to get something else.
Circulate around, yeah.
Yeah, Kimery, as you step into vice chair, you've got the foundation and community advisory. Are you wanting to maintain both of those, or would you like to replace one of those?
Okay.
If somebody loves a committee, that's all I need to hear.
The changes I have on my sheet are, or proposed changes, Sally for AMSD, Megan picking up PTA, PTO, and all other committees remaining the same.
Seems like a lot of nodding of heads.
Yeah, the only, the only other question I had was, would it make sense for me, being the 287 board representative, to also double up with Sally on the special education advisory committee, just so that, so that there's some crossover reference points for me?
I, I think that probably makes good sense, so I'll fill, I'll write that in.
I second that.
Yeah, if you've got that capacity, that sounds great.
Is there any other committees?
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yeah? Something about that phrase.
Between now and January, you will need to decide amongst yourself who's nominating which people, and you can, we can coordinate that, Megan will work on that, too.
Yeah, okay. All right. We didn't talk about dates, as we've all seen the dates, did anybody, if anyone had any screaming issues that we need to talk about, let's do it, otherwise I think we'll have a calendar. Okay? Great. All right, well, I think that's the end of our list, unless anyone else has anything to say, Chris?
Happy holidays.
I'm giving you a hard time. You were on a roll, we had to go with it. That's right.
I just, I did, I was like, oh, I'm talking a lot, might as well talk some more.
That's right.
Yeah. Good. That's right. The dichotomy of public education, you're talking, you're cutting your budget.